All right, I'd like to call our December 12, 2019 meeting, 6:00 PM meeting, to order. We do have a forum, we have four members. The first, Article One, will be the Pledge of Allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the people for which it stands, a nation under God, indivisible, infinite, and ever- [inaudible 00:00:36] Article Two, consider other business and adjustments to the agenda. I don't believe we have any other business or adjustments to the agenda tonight. Article Three, to consider an executive session for personnel matters per one MRS A subsection 405, 6A. I will need a motion to go into executive session. So who, moved by Doug, is there a second?
Second.
Standing by Lori. All in favor? Carry. We will be going to executive session, you guys can stay, we'll leave, so not everyone has to move out of here. We will be back after our executive session.
[inaudible 00:00:39]
Almost as, not as bad as her, but it feels like it, seven minutes from this. If my car is dirty, if my car is dirty, I don't want another one to do it. But it's nice in the winter, it's nice in the summer, it's just dirty. It's dusty, so depending on my current [inaudible 00:01:19] But you know, it's the same amount of time, going down, going down, the same as, we tried it, like, I go here, you go there.
A mile?
No, not even a mile. It feels a bit shorter, but it's the same amount of time. Time waste is the same, yeah.
Next is one.
You look my ear eyes on me there. We had the most production and nobody could figure out why.
Needs to work, no, it's like the same amount of time. So much same time. The.[190.98][190.98][S01. The.[191.98][191.98][S01. The.[192.98][192.98][S01. The.[193.98][193.98][S01. The.[194.98][194.98][S01. The.[195.98][195.98][S01. The.[196.98][196.98][S01. The.[197.98][197.98][S01. The.[198.98][198.98][S01. The.[199.98][199.98][S01. The.[200.98][200.98][S01. The.[201.98][201.98][S01. The.[202.98][202.98][S01. The.[203.98][203.98][S01. The.[204.98][204.98][S01. The.[205.98][205.98][S01. The.[206.98][206.98][S01. The.[207.98][207.98][S01. The.[208.98][208.98][S01. The.[209.98][209.98][S01. The.[210.98][210.98][S01. The.[211.98][211.98][S01. The.[212.98][212.98][S01. The.[213.98][213.98][S01. The.[214.98][214.98][S01. The.[215.98][215.98][S01. The.[216.98][216.98][S01. The.[217.98][217.98][S01. The.[218.98][218.98][S01. The.[219.98][219.98][S01. The.[220.98][220.98][S01. The.[221.98][221.98][S01. The.[222.98][222.98][S01. The.[223.98][223.98][S01. The.[224.98][224.98][S01. The.[225.98][225.98][S01. The.[226.98][226.98][S01. The.[227.98][227.98][S01. The.[228.98][228.98][S01. The.[229.98][229.98][S01. The.[230.98][230.98][S01. The.[231.98][231.98][S01. The.[232.98][232.98][S01. The.[233.98][233.98][S01. The.[234.98][234.98][S01. The.[235.98][235.98][S01. The.[236.98][236.98][S01. The.[237.98][237.98][S01. The.[238.98][238.98][S01. The.[239.98][239.98][S01. The.[240.98][240.98][S01. The.[241.98][241.98][S01. The.[242.98][242.98][S01. The.[243.98][243.98][S01. The.[244.98][244.98][S01. The.[245.98][245.98][S01. The.[246.98][246.98][S01. The.[247.98][247.98][S01. The.[248.98][248.98][S01. The.[249.98][249.98][S01. The.[250.98][250.98][S01. The.[251.98][251.98][S01. The.[252.98][252.98][S01. The.[253.98][253.98][S01. The.[254.98][254.98][S01. The.[255.98][255.98][S01. The.[256.98][256.98][S01. The.[257.98][257.98][S01. The.[258.98][258.98][S01. The.[259.98][259.98][S01. The.[260.98][260.98][S01. The.[261.98][261.98][S01. The.[262.98][262.98][S01. The.[263.98][263.98][S01. The.[264.98][264.98][S01. The.[265.98][265.98][S01. The.[266.98][266.98][S01. The.[267.98][267.98][S01. The.[268.98][268.98][S01. The.[269.98][269.98][S01. The.[270.98][270.98][S01. The.[271.98][271.98][S01. The.[272.98][272.98][S01. The.[273.98][273.98][S01. The.[274.98][274.98][S01. The.[275.98][275.98][S01. The.[276.98][276.98][S01. The.[277.98][277.98][S01. The.[278.98][278.98][S01. The.[279.98][279.98][S01. The.[280.98][280.98][S01. The.[281.98][281.98][S01. The.[282.98][282.98][S01. The.[283.98][283.98][S01. The.[284.98][284.98][S01. The.[285.98][285.98][S01. The.[286.98][286.98][S01. The.[287.98][287.98][S01. The.[288.98][288.98][S01. The.[289.98][289.98][S01. The.[290.98][290.98][S01. The.[291.98][291.98][S01. The.[292.98][292.98][S01. The.[293.98][293.98][S01. The.[294.98][294.98][S01. The.[295.98][295.98][S01. The.[296.98][296.98][S01. The.[297.98][297.98][S01. The.[298.98][298.98][S01. The.[299.98][299.98][S01. The.[300.98][300.98][S01. The.[301.98][301.98][S01. The.[302.98][302.98][S01. The.[303.98][303.98][S01. The.[304.98][304.98][S01. The.[305.98][305.98][S01. The.[306.98][306.98][S01. The.[307.98][307.98][S01. The.[308.98][308.98][S01. The.[309.98][309.98][S01. The.[310.98][310.98][S01. The.[311.98][311.98][S01. The.[312.98][312.98][S01. The.[313.98][313.98][S01. The.[314.98][314.98][S01. The.[315.98][315.98][S01. The.[316.98][316.98][S01. The.[317.98][317.98][S01. The.[318.98][318.98][S01. The.[319.98][319.98][S01. The.[320.98][320.98][S01. The.[321.98][321.98][S01. The.[322.98][322.98][S01. The.[323.98][323.98][S01. The.[324.98][324.98][S01. The.[325.98][325.98][S01. The.[326.98][326.98][S01. The.[327.98][327.98][S01. The.[328.98][328.98][S01. The.[329.98][329.98][S01. The.[330.98][330.98][S01. The.[331.98][331.98][S01. The.[332.98][332.98][S01. The.[333.98][333.98][S01. The.[334.98][334.98][S01. The.[335.98][335.98][S01. The.[336.98][336.98][S01. The.[337.98][337.98][S01. The.[338.98][338.98][S01. The.[339.98][339.98][S01. The.[340.98][340.98][S01. The.[341.98][341.98][S01. The.[342.98][342.98][S01. The.[343.98][343.98][S01. The.[344.98][344.98][S01. The.[345.98][345.98][S01. The.[346.98][346.98][S01. The.[347.98][347.98][S01. The.[348.98][348.98][S01. The.[349.98][349.98][S01. The.[350.98][350.98][S01. The.[351.98][351.98][S01. The.[352.98][352.98][S01. The.[353.98][353.98][S01. The.[354.98][354.98][S01. The.[355.98][355.98][S01. The.[356.98][356.98][S01. The.[357.98][357.98][S01. The.[358.98][358.98][S01. The.[359.98][359.98][S01. The.[360.98][360.98][S01. The.[361.98][361.98][S01. The.[362.98][362.98][S01. The.[363.98][363.98][S01. The.[364.98][364.98][S01. The.[365.98][365.98][S01. The.[366.98][366.98][S01. The.[367.98][367.98][S01. The.[368.98][368.98][S01. The.[369.98][369.98][S01. The.[370.98][370.98][S01. The.[371.98][371.98][S01. The.[372.98][372.98][S01. The.[373.98][373.98][S01. The.[374.98][374.98][S01. The.[375.98][375.98][S01. The.[376.98][376.98][S01. The.[377.98][377.98][S01. The.[378.98][378.98][S01. The.[379.98][379.98][S01. The.[380.98][380.98][S01. The.[381.98][381.98][S01. The.[382.98][382.98][S01. The.[383.98][383.98][S01. The.[384.98][384.98][S01. The.[385.98][385.98][S01. The.[386.98][386.98][S01. The.[387.98][387.98][S01. The.[388.98][388.98][S01. The.[389.98][389.98][S01. The.[390.98][390.98][S01. The.[391.98][391.98][S01. The.[392.98][392.98][S01. The.[393.98][393.98][S01. The.[394.98][394.98][S01. The.[395.98][395.98][S01. The.[396.98][396.98][S01. The.[397.98][397.98][S01. The.[398.98][398.98][S01. The.[399.98][399.98][S01. The.[400.98][400.98][S01. The.[401.98][401.98][S01. The.[402.98][402.98][S01. The.[403.98][403.98][S01. The.[404.98][404.98][S01. The.[405.98][405.98][S01. The.[406.98][406.98][S01. The.[407.98][407.98][S01. The.[408.98][408.98][S01. The.[409.98][409.98][S01. The.[410.98][410.98][S01. The.[411.98][411.98][S01. The.[412.98][412.98][S01. The.[413.98][413.98][S01. The.[414.98][414.98][S01. The.[415.98][415.98][S01. The.[416.98][416.98][S01. The.[417.98][417.98][S01. The.[418.98][418.98][S01. The.[419.98][419.98][S01. The.[420.98][420.98][S01. The.[421.98][421.98][S01. The.[422.98][422.98][S01. The.[423.98][423.98][S01. The.[424.98][424.98][S01. The.[425.98][425.98][S01. The.[426.98][426.98][S01. The.[427.98][427.98][S01. The.[428.98][428.98][S01. The.[429.98][429.98][S01. The.[430.98][430.98][S01. The.[431.98][431.98][S01. The.[432.98][432.98][S01. The.[433.98][433.98][S01. The.[434.98][434.98][S01. The.[435.98][435.98][S01. The.[436.98][436.98][S01. The.[437.98][437.98][S01. The.[438.98][438.98][S01. The.[439.98][439.98][S01. The.[440.98][440.98][S01. The.[441.98][441.98][S01. The.[442.98][442.98][S01. The.[443.98][443.98][S01. The.[444.98][444.98][S01. The.[445.98][445.98][S01. The.[446.98][446.98][S01. The.[447.98][447.98][S01. The.[448.98][448.98][S01. The.[449.98][449.98][S01. The.[450.98][450.98][S01. The.[451.98][451.98][S01. The.[452.98][452.98][S01. The.[453.98][453.98][S01. The.[454.98][454.98][S01. The.[455.98][455.98][S01. The.[456.98][456.98][S01. The.[457.98][457.98][S01. The.[458.98][458.98][S01. The.[459.98][459.98][S01. The.[460.98][460.98][S01. The.[461.98][461.98][S01. The.[462.98][462.98][S01. The.[463.98][463.98][S01. The.[464.98][464.98][S01. The.[465.98][465.98][S01. The.[466.98][466.98][S01. The.[467.98][467.98][S01. The.[468.98][468.98][S01. The.[469.98][469.98][S01. The.[470.98][470.98][S01. The.[471.98][471.98][S01. The.[472.98][472.98][S01. The.[473.98][473.98][S01. The.[474.98][474.98][S01. The.[475.98][475.98][S01. The.[476.98][476.98][S01. The.[477.98][477.98][S01. The.[478.98][478.98][S01. The.[479.98][479.98][S01. The.[480.98][480.98][S01. The.[481.98][481.98][S01. The.[482.98][482.98][S01. The.[483.98][483.98][S01. The.[484.98][484.98][S01. The.[485.98][485.98][S01. The.[486.98][486.98][S01. The.[487.98][487.98][S01. The.[488.98][488.98][S01. The.[489.98][489.98][S01. The.[490.98][490.98][S01. The.[491.98][491.98][S01. The.[492.98][492.98][S01. The.[493.98][493.98][S01. The.[494.98][494.98][S01. The.[495.98][495.98][S01. The.[496.98][496.98][S01. The.[497.98][497.98][S01. The.[498.98][498.98][S01. The.[499.98][499.98][S01. The.[500.98][500.98][S01. The.[501.98][501.98][S01. The.[502.98][502.98][S01. The.[503.98][503.98][S01. The.[504.98][504.98][S01. The.[505.98][505.98][S01. The.[506.98][506.98][S01. The.[507.98][507.98][S01. The.[508.98][508.98][S01. The.[509.98][509.98][S01. The.[510.98][510.98][S01. The.[511.98][511.98][S01. The.[512.98][512.98][S01. The.[513.98][513.98][S01. The.[514.98][514.98][S01. The.[515.98][515.98][S01. The.[516.98][516.98][S01. The.[517.98][517.98][S01. The.[518.98][518.98][S01. The.[519.98][519.98][S01. The.[520.98][520.98][S01. The.[521.98][521.98][S01. The.[522.98][522.98][S01. The.[523.98][523.98][S01. The.[524.98][524.98][S01. The.[525.98][525.98][S01. The.[526.98][526.98][S01. The.[527.98][527.98][S01. The.[528.98][528.98][S01. The.[529.98][529.98][S01. The.[530.98][530.98][S01. The.[531.98][531.98][S01. The.[532.98][532.98][S01. The.[533.98][533.98][S01. The.[534.98][534.98][S01. The.[535.98][535.98][S01. The.[536.98][536.98][S01. The.[537.98][537.98][S01. The.[538.98][538.98][S01. The.[539.98][539.98][S01. The.[540.98][540.98][S01. The.[541.98][541.98][S01. The.[542.98][542.98][S01. The.[543.98][543.98][S01. The.[544.98][544.98][S01. The.[545.98][545.98][S01. The.[546.98][546.98][S01. The.[547.98][547.98][S01. The.[548.98][548.98][S01. The.[549.98][549.98][S01. The.[550.98][550.98][S01. The.[551.98][551.98][S01. The.[552.98][552.98][S01. The.[553.98][553.98][S01. The.[554.98][554.98][S01. The.[555.98][555.98][S01. The.[556.98][556.98][S01. The.[557.98][557.98][S01. The.[558.98][558.98][S01. The.[559.98][559.98][S01. The.[560.98][560.98][S01. The.[561.98][561.98][S01. The.[562.98][562.98][S01. The.[563.98][563.98][S01. The.[564.98][564.98][S01. The.[565.98][565.98][S01. The.[566.98][566.98][S01. The.[567.98][567.98][S01. The.[568.98][568.98][S01. The.[569.98][569.98][S01. The.[570.98][570.98][S01. The.[571.98][571.98][S01. The.[572.98][572.98][S01. The.[573.98][573.98][S01. The.[574.98][574.98][S01. The.[575.98][575.98][S01. The. All right, um, we're out of the executive session. I need a motion to prove that we're out of the executive session. So move. Move by Doug, seconded by Lori, all the favor. We have a couple of items that we want to address as outcome of the executive session. The first one, uh, we have a prepared statement to make here, and I'd like to do that right now. Uh, it's to the taxpayers and citizens of Manawaska. On behalf of the Board of Selectmen of Manawaska, we feel that it's time to address serious issues that were brought up at the informational meeting held on November twenty-fifth at the Manawaska High Middle School Library. Yes, you all have the right to be upset in regards to the three mil tax increase that we are all facing. We understand the hardship that this will have on many of you. This board is set in setting the mill rate, understood that impact, but had no other choice but to set a mill rate that met the obligation set forth at town meeting of June two thousand nineteen to adequately fund voter-approved budgets of the municipal, school, county tax, Northern District Regional Airport, and the Valley Recycling Facility. That is the obligation of the Board of Selectmen to ensure that enough tax dollars are raised. Questions were raised about the town's undesigned fund balance. Be assured that all of the funds that were transferred out had taxpayer approvals at town meetings. Statements that funds were misappropriated appropriated are completely false, and those statements serve no other purpose but to attempt to divide this community. We will have available for you review copies of the annual undesigned fund balance showing what transfers of funds occurred with voter approval and for what purpose since fiscal year ended two thousand fifteen. This will show what went in and when went out of that account. The impact of this undesigned fund took a big hit when Twin Rivers paper filed for an abatement contesting their two thousand eighteen, two thousand, uh, excuse me, two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen taxes. The mill had been set for that year in anticipation that they would pay their mill, uh, their tax bill as delivered to them. What happened is that they paid what their previous years assessed value in taxes was as they filed for the abatement. That left the town of Manawaska a shortfall of one point five million dollars. With budgets having been improved, they needed to be funded, and those funds to operate came from the undesigned fund balance. In recent times, our town manager and our finance director have been the target of a smear campaign by a small group of individuals from this town. They have been falsely accused of all types of inappropriate behavior. We are here tonight to let everyone know that these accusations are completely not true. Their main objective is to try to discredit two employees who work very hard for this community each and every day. They have been going through a hell because of these vicious lies being spread on social media. We have dedicated staff that work hard on behalf of all taxpayers. Our department heads and employees at town of Manawaska are committed to this community and provide the best possible service to all of us. What is being said on social media is wrong, very wrong, and it is hurting our community. We serve because we believe in this community, and those false statements will not deter us from our mission of serving Manawaska to the best of our ability. This Board of Selectmen is proud of all employees from the town manager, the finance director, and all employees who work for the town of Manawaska. We support our employees, and they do a fine, and they do the fine job they do for all of us. We now have to move forward, and we want to let all of you know that by moving forward, this elected Board of Selectmen is committed to working for all taxpayers in this community in a positive way as we have always done. We are resolved to fixing this problem together. Thank you. At this point, I will open up to any other board member who may have more to add or other comments to make.
Don't say anything, you know, if you want to say something, I can go.
Sure. As we know, we're in a pickle, and here we are today. This is relatively a new board here. We're addressing the problem, trying to find what the problem is and addressing that problem. Sometimes we're more focused on where was, who's responsible for the problem. Right now, what we're looking for is solutions. And, uh, the people responsible to put us in this position are the people that were here on this board, the people that are on the board upstairs, and we're talking here at least twelve people. There's a board, a finance committee that's also involved in developing all these budgets. There are town meetings that the public is involved in all these budgets. And then, uh, not, not, uh, not, not least, but the last one would be Twin Rivers. Twin Rivers, uh, was reassessed not to an amount that is, uh, uh, over, over-exaggerated. The amount of money that they've been reassessed at by the assessor that this board had authorized is the same number that was ten years ago. So we're not, uh, picking numbers out of the sky here. These are numbers that are very well-founded, and I would expect, uh, Twin Rivers to be a better corporate system and to come forward and to admit that they owe those taxes and that it's their, it's their share. Like myself, you wouldn't expect me if they only have my taxes, right? Because that makes a burden harder on all of you. Same thing for them down there. They need to step up and pay their fair share, as much as I hate that term. And, uh, the only reason they're not doing it is because the case was lost on a technicality, not on the merits of the case. That's, that's what I have to say.
David, anyone else?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Today, I guess I was privy to see this petition that has come around, and I'm really puzzled with this because I don't understand it. I don't know where it's coming from. I don't know why these people are putting that petition forward, and I'd like to talk to somebody that, that might have information about it. So if we have somebody here that's willing to speak up on behalf of this petition, then, then I'd like them to, to, to at least stand up and, and help me. I need to ask a couple of questions. So is there anybody here that, that's ready to do that? Aaron?
Want me to stand or can you stand?
Well, you can stand if you like. Aaron. Do you have any information or evidence that our town manager has done something contrary to what this board is asking to do? Gary takes orders or direction from this board or previous boards. Do you have any information that would lead us to believe that he's doing anything different than what we have asked him to do?
Well, unfortunately, I didn't bring any of my paperwork with me, but the paperwork that has been provided by the town so far, there are numerous discrepancies with the numbers that have been provided. So going back to the question, if I have evidence, to me, the bottom line, the fact that there's a three mil increase and the whole point is that Twin River, Twin, Twin Rivers didn't pay their fair share. As, as a board and as a manager, I would assume that you don't put all your eggs in one basket. So the outcome of the lack of oversight is what led to a three mil increase or a negative one point five million, whichever the number that Mr. Moore said.
Of course, um, that's a major issue. That's a major issue. But it's not at Gary's decision. It's never at Gary's decision to decide whether we are going to tax somebody, not tax somebody, not go any, in any direction where Gary's advising us, this board, what we should be doing. It's just the reverse. It comes from this board. So he was advised after numerous contacts with the mill to move forward. There was legal counsel in the middle of all that. There was state counsel that advises that, that the term sheet that they had on us was, was not going to be binding. So it's not by his discretion or his move that that was decided on. Do you have any evidence that he's acted improperly? Relationship-wise, aggressive towards employees, uh, is he, does he discriminate with anybody? I mean, what, do you have anything there that tells us, this board, that he's doing something inappropriate that we can or we have to decide what to do with him?
I've never accused any town employee of any type of, any of that.
Do you have any evidence that he's not forthright, that he's not telling the truth?
Yes, I do.
I, I mean, we want to hear it. We need to hear it.
Well, I didn't realize I was going to be answering questions here tonight because I would have brought everything, I would have brought something with me, but I do have, there was a board meeting back in.
Well, I mean, off the top of your head, I mean.
Okay, anyway, we were at a meeting back in the spring of two thousand eighteen at the high school library, and Article Three, I want to say, had to do with borrowing one point six zero five million dollars for the waste, wastewater treatment facility. And it was a, I want to say it was a two percent over the course of twenty-eight years. And when we got up and we asked, you know, how was this going to affect the taxpayers, we were told that it wouldn't affect us more than two percent of an increase. Well, fast forward, uh, to the, uh, end of two thousand eighteen, oh, I can't remember which page off the top of my head, but the spending increase, there was nothing in the budget, but then a number of seven hundred ninety-one thousand dollars was paid out. So if you go back and you look, there is the one that.
Well, listen, Aaron, Aaron, I mean, when we talk about figures, this board decides the figures. It's not Gary. Gary is our forefront. He stands in front of us. I understand the information that he gave you. That's what you saw.
Can I, may I speak?
Yep.
The sewer bond that was approved at town meeting, that is an enterprise fund associated with the sewer department.
That's true.
And sewer rates, okay? And nothing in the sewer department loan has anything to do with the town's tax commitment or any of the inappropriate, uh, surplus or undesigned fund. Those are two separate operating budgets.
Okay. Okay, last question. Do you have any information to share with this board that is definitive to help us decide the future of this town manager? Do you have anything that's irreputable? Do you have any information that you believe that he has done something that we should act on?
From my understanding, and forgive me, I may have this wrong, because maybe you're saying that he basically works for you guys, and you guys are the ones responsible for the plight that the town is in right now. But from how I've read it, and it's been told to me, is that bottom line is he is the town treasurer. He is the one that's supposed to balance the books. So if you guys come to him and say, hey, we need this, we need that, whatever, at the end of the day, it falls on him because he's the one that's the town treasurer. He's the one that's signing the checks. Not, not the board. The board doesn't sign.
No, he, he's, he's the town treasurer. He's, he's been given the responsibility to take care of the money that it goes to the right account at the right time.
Okay.
All the decisions about the size of the bill and where it goes has been made by this board, by the finance board, and also by the school board. That's all been decided at a, an annual town meeting as well. How the funds are dispersed during the year is his responsibility to make sure that everybody gets paid at the right time and the right amounts. That's, that's his responsibility.
So how were the bills paid when there's a negative one point five million?
Well, that's where you have to go look for one point five million. And then, and, and it went to the undesigned fund balance to cover two thousand eighteen, and to cover two thousand nineteen, we had to go through a, a three mil increase. All precipitated by not receiving the tax anticipated money coming from Twin Rivers. And why it was done that way, as a private person, I wouldn't have done that way, but as a public, uh, town, it had to be done the way it was done. I can explain it to you sometime if you want to hear it. It's a little lengthy, but they had no choice but to proceed the way they proceeded.
Okay, so if he's the front for the board, he's, I guess, the.
Manager.
The manager, okay? Any, any repercussions of the decisions that the board makes is reflected through and by him. is reflected through and by him? So what you're saying is that he is not the one at fault, that it's the board's fault for the three mil? Is that what I'm hearing?
I listed, I listed to you, I listed to you whose fault it was. It was this board, it was the board, educational board, that's also elected by the people. It was the lack of being paid by Twin Rivers, uh, and also by the public that voted for this budget that we're dealing with right now. You see, when the budget is voted for, then we have to come back here at the later time and say, okay, uh, we need X amount of dollars, they voted this budget, but you know what? Um, our mil rate only brings in this much. So we need extra money, so we have to expand the mil rate to meet the budget that's already been approved.
But he is the one that signs the checks.
He does, he does the daily bookwork, yes he does.
And we also, just, you know, clarification purposes, I think, we as a board always sign on the warrant too. We put our names on the warrants.
Right.
Each bill comes through us, we see those bills.
Right.
Okay? Just to, to talk a little bit, we, we did ask our, uh, our, our HR Smith and Company, the people that have been auditing this town, independent auditors, for a, a statement. They responded in writing. As discussed and based on our past audits from 2015 through 2018, we see no evidence of missing or unexplained monies slash fund balances, et cetera. In reviewing the 2017 and the drop of 943,000 from 2016, this can be attributed to the town voting to use about $700,000 of undersigned fund balances to reduce property taxes and fund a capital replacement account. Furthermore, there was another choice of the town at a special town meeting to utilize 250,000 for appraisal and legal costs associated with the, the, uh, what we have done. They, you know, uh, they, they said they've heard that the word "missing monies" uh, many times in conversations has been expressed. And they say we obviously take those words very seriously. And... He says governmental accounting and financial statements prepared in accordance with these standards can be confusing, but explainable. And he even suggested that he could address or come to a board meeting if we so wish to have him, that firm, come over and talk to us. That letter was dated December 10th.
No, this firm, uh, does this every year, right?
Yeah.
They go through all the books.
Yeah.
And they make sure that everything has been done correctly.
Correct. You know, Aaron, um, I guess in closing, what I, what I have here this evening, I don't, I don't, I don't see anything here that's, that's damaging on his part. And I would really like you to reconsider this petition. I'd like you to pick it up and tear it up because it's not going to go anywhere. We're, we're looking at everything here for information and, and we're digging with what we have here, we're asking questions. And it's, there's nothing coming up. There's absolutely nothing coming up. As a matter of fact, as we're talking here, I mean, we're seeing this town changing in front of our eyes. You're seeing what's happening with the downtown development. You're seeing some of the millions of dollars that are coming through in grants. You're seeing some buildings that are coming down. You're going to see the downtown change in a matter of a year or so. The shopping center here, that's going to change completely. They are aggressively chasing business to come here. I mean, I haven't seen this town move like this in the last five, 10, 15 years. And yet, we're ready to throw them out the door. Because you think that there's something going on between employees? It's, 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 it doesn't make any sense. If, if you, if, if you were involved in what's happening in this town, and, and it won't take long, I mean, within a matter of a year or two, you're going to see some major changes. He's aggressive. Is he cold and shrewd sometimes? Well, when you've been pushed against the wall like, like he has a few times, yeah. That can happen. I know. When Dave talks about moving forward, it's not just us. It's you guys. We're looking forward, we're trying to change, we're trying to do whatever we can to help this town.
And is that...
Okay, um, another topic of discussion that was a little too just a few minutes ago. There was a petition, I think you filed it this morning with the, with our counterpart, if I'm correct. I think Lori has something to talk about.
Well, I just, I, I, the petition was sent to the town's lawyer. And absent of any other legal information or anyone else presenting a dip, something different than what he is saying here, um, you know, there's a whole letter here that I'm, this must be public record, that you can share.
Well, it will be now, that gives you, it's going to be, yeah.
He's basically letting us know that the petition improperly asks the board to call a special town meeting whereupon the voters could decide the employment fate of both the town manager and finance director. Um, I don't know where you got the direction of how the petition should be, um, submitted and what you could require of the board, but the town's lawyer is telling us that it's not even legal for us to accept this. So, um, I understand everyone's frustration. I have been, you know, I, I've spent time talking to business people up and down the road. I mean, any of them can't vote here because they don't live in the town. Um, I've talked to some of you guys, I've, I've had opinions on both sides. I get the frustration. I'm starting a new business here that, I mean, is subject to fail just because, you know, whether what side of the coin I land on in this or, or, um, you know, the taxes went up before we even owned the building. Um, I, I get the struggle. I feel like if you have some real hard legal evidence, um, not the, and we discussed, it wasn't you putting out this disgusting stuff on Facebook, um, if you have any of that, then by all means, you really need to bring it to us. And, and we're going to listen. But legally, right now, we cannot act on this petition even if we want to. So we're going to get the town in a whole big mess of trouble if we try to act on the petition and put this, you know, to town meeting at all. I think that there is a big, maybe, um, publicity, I, I don't know the word. Um, there's not a lot of sharing coming out of this office. They're doing a lot of things, um, there's one in business in particular interested in coming, but they really want to keep things quiet until they decide what they're doing. There's not a lot of good information coming out and, and they're not sitting here bragging, I did this today and I met with this person today and I wrote this grant and I wrote that grant, but they're doing it. So maybe we could be helpful and find a way to make sure that information gets out to the people, as well as trying to work with the budget to reverse this three mil. Because I know, me personally, I'm committed to getting this reversed somehow. Um, I don't know how we're going to do it, it's going to hurt, but, um, you know, it is, it is what it is. And if you guys have some ideas about cuts or revenues, um, what we could do to change things that could fix this, please let us know. Because I know I go to one person and say, well, it could mean this whole department. And they say, no, cut that one. And the next person, I mean, we all want everything, it's going to be tough. It's going to be really tough to balance this, but, um...
Well, we're going to try.
That's just, I, I mean...
Ja- just to put a, a little bit of the, the, the effects of our, oh, not the effects, the, the results of our executive session to rest here tonight. Again, that letter from Rudman Winchell, the legal opinion on the petition area. In fact, there are no positions within the governmental structure of the town of Madawaska whereby the holders of any position could be terminated by voters at a town meeting. That's his legal opinion to us. And, uh, so at this point, I guess, to put a close to it for tonight, I would ask if there is a motion and a second, open to discussion, if we're going to follow through with the petition or we're going to terminate it here tonight. Any other motion?
So, so state what you're looking for, for a motion again?
Is that we put the petition to rest based on legal opinion, that the petition is not valid and contrary to some of the law. Moved by Doug, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Is there any more discussion on this subject? I'll ask for show hands.
Um, I am going to abstain only because, um, you know, I, I, I mean, I said myself, I feel that it's not legal for us to even accept it. I just, there's some language in here that I honestly just don't understand enough to say. Uh, the first statement is very plain, but the rest of it, I'm kind of questioning, so.
Okay, that's fair.
I'm just going to, I'm going to abstain because I don't, I don't feel like I have enough science.
Mr. Chairman? Is there room for public discussion in this?
Based on, in normal times, no, but based on what's going on tonight, if you have a comment that you would like to make before we take a final vote, I'd appreciate, and I'd like to hear it.
Those that don't know me, my name is Dan Daigle, I've been a lifelong...
And Dan too, if, if, do you think it'll have a bearing on our decision to vote or not?
Oh, no.
Okay, well, let us finish this and then we'll go to public participation.
Okay.
All right?
Just to clarify a little bit, you know, Laura took a little time to speak there. My reasoning is that we've got a legal opinion over here and I believe that's the best that we can go on. And I think that we ought to go with the legal opinion. If there are any more questions out there or concerns, maybe, uh, you need to address somebody on the board, either privately or any other way, then we can answer any and all of your questions and to, to resolve these issues and to make our town move forward.
And, and just to make things, it's much better, you know, we, we have a period of public participation at all our meetings. And we would like that participation to be from you. So if you do have any of those concerns, it would be appropriate for you to bring it up in front of all of us. Not just necessarily one or... We'll do what we can to answer that. And if we can't answer it tonight or at some other meeting, we certainly will try to get back to you.
Okay.
That's, that's the next article coming up, so soon as we vote here, then that's the next thing.
Okay, all in favor? Abstain. One extension. We have that on the record?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. All right, now we're going to move on to Article Four, which is public participation. Mr. Daigle, I know you wanted to, uh, come forward. What we do is, during public participation, we allow up to 10 minutes of the board meeting time. A couple minutes per person, so that we try to, anyone who may want to speak, we give them a chance to speak. Go ahead, sir.
As I was saying, I've been a lifelong resident of Madawaska. The insignia that we own that hangs on that wall right there, Town of Madawaska, that has a certain appreciation in Selectman Doug Sears' life. You can ask him about it. After the meeting, but you'll see 1869, 1869, when the French Acadians landed here, my ancestors, the Daigles, were in that boat. I was born here and I would like to die here. We're at a point in Madawaska where there's difficult times in the financial arena. Uh, I have nothing to hide. I have followed this very closely since the night of the meeting. I've had the privilege of speaking with town manager Gary Peekard, Don Chasse, Dave Moran, and I have spoken with Aaron, uh, a bit. I would have liked to speak with you a little bit more prior to the meeting, but that's neither here nor there. But if we are going to make any progress in this community, we can't always be right. And myself, in the last 15 years of doing business, literal business, I had several confrontations here. And I have taken some bites out of some councilmen, out of some past managers, and Selectman Chasse will vouch for that. But unless we come to the table, you know, on, on the side of the town manager and the councilman, uh, I think it'd be very proactive on their part to do their best, to try to leave any of the past behind. To move forward, we need to come to the table, both sides, if you will, put the numbers and the facts on the table. And if one is right and the other is wrong, that's fine, if you have to come to a compromise, but we have to come to the table. In all due respect, Aaron, I find you to be a very smart boy. Smart young man, sorry. You've done a lot of research, I know that. You have a lot of accurate information. But I ask this side and this side to rethink this through. And Aaron, I, I really believe that you could be an asset to the moving forward of this community. Oftentimes, when we don't have the entire picture, the, all of the numbers we need at times, sometimes we're a little hasty, or I am at least, in running. But after 64 years, I've learned that sometimes to move a little slower and it's more profitable. But I do think we have the resources to meet together and just see this community move forward. Because as it is, we, we do not have viable employment for our youth here. The paper mill, I was employed there in 1980, we were 1,240 employees. Today, they are 400 employees. So that pretty well paints the picture of the reality. People tell me, well, Dan, you're a little too negative. I like to be realistic. But I would like to see this community go forward as best as it can, both parties together. Let's base our decisions on facts. But I am of the opinion that Twin Rivers is the culprit. And I don't care how much tax dollars needs to be spent, personally, and I speak for myself. I believe that it's time for this board to seriously consider going back after Twin Rivers and having them pay their fair share. I don't mind paying my taxes, but we need to pay their fair share for this community to continue.
Thank you, Mr. Daigle.
Thank you, Dave.
Is there anyone else who would like to address under public participation?
With this one, Don. Uh, I was over at Orchard Restaurant a couple weeks ago, I noticed that closed until further notice. I know Gary, uh, Alan Palsen got resigned, I heard last month. So there's nobody that's taking over for right now, so I'm just, love what I saw in the door.
Yeah.
Just for today.
Okay.
So also one thing, just also need a new job in this town with benefits today. If you can go tax free, go with it.
Thank you, Paul. Is there anyone else? Yes, sir.
So, Mr. Chasse, Dave, Doug, Lori, Mr. Peckard. I've just met most of you recently. I'm from here. I've returned here and I intend to stay here. I will be running for selection again, I ran last time. Personally, I think the town, the board, needs to take a proactive stance in file suit for the malicious gossip that's happening online. I met Gary recently for a period of time, never met Dan Agonro. What's being said is simply wrong. And this not for me, about a tax issue, it's a moral issue. And if the board allows us to go unchallenged, it doesn't matter who's going to run. If you are in the crosshairs of a malicious person who chooses to use a cheap, cheap Facebook post to malign and spread gossip and hate among women, I think the town needs to take a stand. Whether someone likes Mr. Peckard, personally, I find it repugnant. What's going on is simply wrong. And I think the board, I think it's incumbent upon the board to take a stand and to file suit with the counter territory or whatever, whatever method is, is, is appropriate. It needs to stop. I think personally it's to happen is a cease and desist order with the, you know, peace of law. It's wrong. So that's what I got to say.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Albert.
Thank you.
At this point, the chairman is reserving the right to act as a citizen for the town of Madawaska as a taxpayer. I will ask the vice chair to, to, uh, continue the meeting until we get through public participation. I have a short statement I want to make from Don Chasse. All right, Mr. Albert, you open that door for me. As a resident, registered voter, taxpayer in this community, I want to say a few words in regards to the personal attacks on our town manager and finance director. The use of social media in a vulgar and dirty way, in my opinion, is what I call cyber bullying.
Amen.
The lies that a few mean and vindictive individuals have spread on Facebook is wrong. And I for one am standing up to those bullies who feel that from, that from the protection of their four walls, they can use dirty pictures and statements to harm innocent, hardworking people in wanting to leave their positions. There is no room for this cyber bullying and lies being spread to discredit and harm reputations of people. They may say that they have the protection of freedom of speech, but I say that freedom of speech should not be used to spread vicious lies about people that hurt individuals and families. I am a citizen and taxpayer of this community. I, and, and, and support those attack, and I support those who attacked employees and all employees of the town of Madawaska. And I denounce those cyber bullying tactics. I hope others in this community also can stand with me in denouncing their tactics. Bullying in any form is wrong and should never be tolerated. Thank you. Is there anyone else that, uh, would like to comment?
I would.
Okay.
All I want to say is that it's been said if we don't learn from history, it's liable to repeat again. I have no, no accusation to any of you. I believe that you're all public servants who want to help the community and whatnot. And, and I believe you're sincere in doing this. And apparently, certain, the budget more or less reflected that certain amounts of money would go here and there and that we needed this money. You know, we live in America where most people live, um, live on borrowed money. You know, is, uh, trying to, um, uh, raise taxes is never an easy thing to do. But at the same time, I think at times people are guilty of wanting to spend money they don't have yet. So it's not to blame anybody in particular. But the thing of it is, the, the, the situation with Twin River should have been looked into long before, uh, we decide to spend X amount of dollars. And, and the reason I say that because, um, like it was said by someone, Larry, don't you paint your house once in a while? Yes, I do. But I try to do it at my expense. You know what I mean? And, uh, that's why I, I, I really think is that i- if we're not careful, this could happen again. So that's all I'm stating. And, and a budget is a budget. But certain amount of money is appropriated for this, that, or the other. But the thing of it is, okay, the, the Medes and the Persians, okay, their law was etched in stone and irrevocable. We made that decision, this is the law, and that's it. Well, I, I think at times is we, we, we want to behave that way. Nothing is etched in stone. And sometimes, as we all make mistakes, it's good to reconsider and say, well, maybe, you know, as, uh, Lori said here, is people say, well, we'll take it from this department or that department. True. But we need to come to a, a mutual understanding. I'm saying we, as you people, need to reconsider and think certain things through and, um, find out if a mistake was made. Perhaps we were too presumptuous, assuming and presuming Frazier was going to pay X amount of dollars. It didn't happen. So then we turn to the people and say, people, I'm sorry, but... but you're gonna have to pay." You see? Well, if it's not etched in stone, is perhaps certain things could be changed. And all I'm saying is, in the future, these things could happen again. We need to soberly and seriously consider what we're doing before, you know, making certain policies and certain decisions. So that's all I have to say. I don't accuse anybody of anything. Okay, I take it that you're all here as public servants? You're here to help Madawaska and help it to improve and move on? Although I do have, I'm very, I do have, I'm reserved in certain areas. You know, I've said it before and I'll say it again. I went to the trade show and I saw a long table. And on this table, there were plans to do this, that, or the other. Okay, to beautify Main Street. And I make this comment. You know, in the summertime, you can go to the cemetery and put flowers, beautiful flowers, on all the tombstones. But one thing it will not do is resurrect the dead. Right? Now, spending a whole lot of money on beautifying Main Street, let's make sure of that. What are we trying to do exactly? We're trying to lure people to come into this community and start businesses. I'm telling you, is if we look at it very carefully, I don't think personally, spending thousands of dollars to beautify Main Street is gonna resurrect Madawaska. I mean, when just Kmart left there, it's like, oh my goodness. Thank God for Marden's and thank God for Canadians who come here to buy at Marden's. Because we'd be in big trouble. So that's all I have to say. So may the Lord bless you and give you wisdom to make the right decision.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. So, Mr. Vice Chair, do you want to relinquish back?
Ah, yes, you can have the chair.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question, no. Is there any way we can go back against Frazier with a new assessor, with a new lawyer? Is there anything we can do to fight back?
The, you know, based on that particular case, it was an arbitrator's decision, it was a final, it was a final binding arbitration. We will be looking at other ways as we move forward. We don't know what that is yet, but we are committed to look at everything.
You know, this agreement that was done between the town and the mill, for most people here that don't realize how this agreement got done, it was done in two thousand and twelve. It was done when the mill was...
Thirteen.
Was what?
Thirteen.
Thirteen? Was coming out of bankruptcy. This was to help them. So the town fathers and town manager made an agreement with them. From thirteen to sixteen, we were going to stay with this in taxation to help you out. But it was with the agreement that in two thousand and sixteen, it was gonna get redone. Well, two thousand and sixteen came by. It never did get done. But they paid the taxes accordingly to that agreement. And so, for the next few years, same idea. Now, the town was approaching him at this time. The town was approaching them on three different occasions to address this issue. But they didn't want to hear. And this was addressed again last, when did you guys meet again?
We went mediation in October.
No, mediation, but when you met with the mill directly here? It was in the spring, I guess.
Yeah, I can remember the date.
But anyway, you know, and again, you know, they just didn't want to hear from us. And yeah, that forced our hand. They didn't want to listen to us and they just felt like this agreement was going to last forever. And basically, until we get out from under this agreement, it might very well. So that's the big issue that's still in front of us.
We need to move forward. We're six months beyond what we have. Really quick, go ahead, Dan.
Because we're talking about moving forward, okay? We can't stay in the past. What I'm suggesting is because of the decline in population, we all know it.
Yes.
And less, more retirees in this town than there are young people. All our kids are leaving. They get a college education and they leave because the work is not here. One of the last big bangs for Madawaska may be that port of entry. I hope our town is not gonna turn like Van Buren. Drive through the town, they're painting the windows, it's dead, but they got state-of-the-art port of entry. This is a hub right here. We got a big city right across the river and we're lucky for that because I think we'd be long gone. But my point is, we can't stay, keep doing business the way we're doing. I think because of the decline in population, I'm gonna speak for myself, but I'm also speaking for a majority that's probably quiet. I think every pointed position in this town should be elected by the people by ballot. That's town manager, select, like the selectmen, we vote at the... Any, any big position in this town, because we are the town, the taxpayers. It's our money. We should have direction of casting a vote and voting in the people, you know, like a democracy. That's the way it should be. How do we do that? Do we have a town charter? Does it have to be rewritten? We're not gonna survive the way we're going.
Yeah, we do not, Dan. We don't have a town charter. Intentions were made to try to get one going.
But you know what I'm saying? Is this something that you people could possibly look into?
We're gonna look, we're gonna look at everything that is possibly humanely capable of doing.
This is not an impossible task.
But we are a town manager for the government.
What I'm saying is we go vote for this like man. And I'm not picking on this gentleman here. I'm talking, we're looking down the road, all right? There'll be other town managers here. We, the people, because it's a declining population, it's our money. We should have a big say-so on the direction of how things are gonna go. That's what I'm saying. We should, we should be able to vote on that.
And that should be reflected on how you, which selectman you put in this seat.
Because I'll tell you something. A lot of people are not happy about the shopping plaza there. I'm not quite sure how that came about, but I don't think they gifted us, made us a gift to the town. The people that had that ran that right down. They've collected rent for years. That was built in the fifties. Now, what are we gonna do? We were gifted that. These people, when they filed their taxes, lined their pockets. We're gonna have to abate those buildings late. As best as, it's endless. They didn't make us a gift there. We don't have the money to spend in that. I don't think the town should be in a position of buying old buildings. There again, I'm going back to my number one point. We should have a say-so. Yeah, go ahead and purchase that or go ahead with the acquisition if it's gifted. After it's explained, we should have a say-so. The taxpayers, they should have a say-so. We're not gonna survive if we keep going the way we are.
All right. We're way beyond the amount of time allotted for that, but that's good. We had to do what we had to do. So we're gonna move on with the agenda. The next is Article Five, to consider the treasurer's warrants. There are motions, and a second to approve the treasurer's warrants.
I make a motion to approve the treasurer's warrants.
Motion by Lori. Seconded by Dave. Any questions on them? All in favor? Thank you. Article Six, to consider the board's selectmen meeting minutes of November nineteen, two thousand and nineteen, and the board of selectmen, Madawaska School Committee joint meeting minutes of December two, two thousand and nineteen. Why we take the November nineteen first, is there a motion to accept?
I'll make that motion to accept.
Moved by Dave. Is there a second?
No second.
Seconded by Lori. Any discussion or comments on these minutes? Hearing none, all in favor? Thank you. The December two minutes, is there a motion to accept that printed?
I'll make that motion.
Moved by Dave, is there a second? Seconded by Doug. Any discussion on those minutes? All in favor? Harry, thank you. Article Seven, to consider one board of selectmen to be appointed to the finance committee. This is an appointment that is usually done on a yearly basis. We have a brand-new board member who's expressed that she'd like to be able to participate and be a member of the finance committee. Currently, I am in that position. I have no problem in letting her take over that duty, but we need to do it with board action. But there, first of all, if that's going to be the case, I will make a formal hearing public that I would resign that position. Contingent on Lori being elected to that, to be appointed to that position. You okay with that?
Yeah. Yeah, I rejected it.
I make motion that Lori gets appointed to the finance committee as a work to the, from this board.
Okay. Lori, Doug is second. Any more discussion? All in favor? Speaking of the finance committee, do we have open positions on that right now? Still do, right?
Yes, we do.
One or two?
I think we might have two.
I believe a couple.
Okay.
We have to advertise, we have other vacancies in the planning board.
Okay, could we do that for next board meeting? And to see if anyone would be interested in serving on the finance committee and other boards?
It was my understanding, did I misunderstand, that we were gonna check with legal to see if that's something we could appoint?
Oh, that's true.
Did that happen? Cause that, I...
Can we, can we appoint or is it an elected position at town meeting? That was the question we had, I believe, one of those board meetings.
The finance committee?
Yeah.
Yeah, we'd...
Yeah, I gotta go back and check.
Okay, would you?
Yeah.
Okay, good. All right, so, well, let's get an answer to that at our next board meeting.
So, anyone who's interested in being on the finance committee should...
I think it's typically elected, but if there's a vacancy, it then becomes a priority.
Yeah. And that could be correct, but let's verify that.
Let's verify, yeah.
Now, off the subject not on here, I just realized, I do, you know, on the airport, we do need one more person. Who?
Paul Chassis has expressed interest.
Okay, so bring that up for a next board meeting also. Is there any other position that you can think of right now? But anyway, review all of that and we'll see what...
I think Allen was on the library.
Okay, so the library position would have to be looked at also. Technically, the library position is normally the chairman of the board.
Well, there you go.
Yeah. So if you guys wanna make that motion and put me as library representative from this board, I'll do it. Moved by Doug, seconded by Dave.
Yeah.
All in favor? Harry, okay. Thank you. All right, the next topic of discussion, Article Eight, is to discuss the town's prior dumping of snow in public ways ordinance. Gary, you provided us with information, with past board action, and the ordinance that was voted on and it was discontinued at one point at a board of selectmen meeting on eleven twenty-five oh eight. Can you follow up and...
So the reason why, and I take in my last board meeting manager's report, was sort of alluded to wanting to have a discussion, have the board have some sort of discussion on our policy on allowing vacancies or people to push snow into the roads.
Gary, can you speak louder?
Oh, sorry. At our last board meeting, as part of my manager's report and at the behest of the public works director and the police department, we wanted to get some clarification on the town's policy for allowing the pushing of snow into the, into the public ways, be it the town streets or US route one. And so they said, "We'll put it on the next agenda." And we wanted it to be discussed by the board because there's a lot of misunderstanding about the ordinance. And so we looked at the ordinance that was on the books that was adopted by the board selected. And there is a state law that allows boards, boards, councils, specifically to adopt ordinances that are not, that don't conflict with their own policies for allowing for snow in roadways. And it explicitly gives that authority for the ordinance to be adopted by the board and not through the planning board, town meeting process. And so in two thousand and, hold on.
Eight seven?
Two thousand and seven. The board had adopted a policy, an ordinance, prohibiting of snow in the streets and public ways prohibited. And it was, you know, it was later discontinued by the board at a board meeting on...
Two thousand and eight.
Eleven, October eleven, October twenty-five, two thousand and eight. So currently, right now, the policy, there is no policy that allows pushing of snow into public ways. It falls under state law. Now, this is not a Madawaska issue. Like, it's not unique to Madawaska. Every community like us that have a lot of streets and a lot of snow deal with this, it's a perennial issue. And it's hard to deal with snow. And what ends up happening is that, you know, the calls and complaints are directed to Public Works and they're directed to me. And then obviously, the police department gets involved and they issue citations or whatnot, all warnings. And so it's always, it's a perennial issue. It's been hashed time and over and over again over decades, I'm told. And it's tough. It's tough to deal with snow. We've had two terrible winters. I, I think they're terrible when there's too much snow. And it's really expensive. It's gotten really expensive to pick up snow. And the public works director is right there. We can ask him for his thoughts. And you can talk about the cost of picking up snow. And I guess, as your town manager and public works director and police officer, we want some guidance. We wanna know what this, the position of this board is and what our policy, or no policies in state law. What are we to follow so we know what to do? Because the decision is to say, "We don't allow it to happen." And we have some people that are unhappy about that because they don't have a lot of place to push their snow. And they have very few options. And, but yet, it's tough to strike that balance because, you know, if one does one, then you shouldn't be able to allow everybody else to do it and become a slippery slope. And so it's, it's, it's a tough thing to deal with. But, you know, we are asking for the, your, your guidance on this.
Yeah. Before we get into conversation, could we have Kevin speak a little bit on to the costs associated so far with this, especially in this...
What's an hourly cost of snow? Roughly?
The snow removal operation, just picking up snow, and that's the average of hiring four snow racks per hour. Besides hours, we're at about eleven hundred dollars an hour. And that includes the whole picture, the van hours, the equipment, everything.
So on a yearly basis?
It depends from winter to winter on how many times we go out.
From this to this, how much, roughly?
We usually go, it runs about twenty-five to thirty times a winter that we'll pick up, depending. And that can range from four hours to eight hours plus per time, depending on the amount of snowfall, when it falls.
What's your budget for snow removal? Generally, you must have a line items, snow removal?
For contracted services, we're sixty thousand dollars just for the snow racks, the rental. And then after that, it goes for like fuel budgets, like fuel...
Besides your crew?
Sixty thousand dollars for snow racks.
Besides your, besides your crew?
Yeah, that's for contracted services, what we do. And that includes widening of streets and hauling snow and other...
So what, what, what that, would that total amount be, do you know?
Roughly.
For, for removing snow for one year in Madawaska?
Like last year?
What's your, what's your budget?
If I have to say, last year, we probably spent, I'm gonna say roughly a few hundred thousand dollars at least. And that's including the fuel and everything for whole... Yeah.
And what's the total picture, yeah? Couple hundred thousand?
Last year, we had, it was a tough, there was a lot of snow last year. And, you know, Kevin, Kevin kept a surprise of his budget we were, you know, following and tracking it. And, you know, in, in, in an effort to try to mitigate an overdraft in his budget, you know, he came up with some ideas about, maybe we can push snow into the, you know, blow snow into the east instead of hauling snow in certain areas where we could do that. And in fact, there are a lot of towns that do that. They just push, put snow on the lawns. And it's, it's a departure from what we've been used to. But, but we did that. And Kevin, you know, worked hard and he was diligent in trying to hold the line. And he, and he worked within his budget only because he took those actions and he talked to us about it and we supported that. And it's an adjustment and people had questions and they would call and, you know, and why are you moving this way? Some places we can't do that and we have to pick up and there's other places that we can't...
So let's, let's address the complaint side of it there. So people will complain to you?
They'll either call me or the office or the town office.
Do you complain to them or do they complain to you?
They come to see me most of the time. The only time I react on it is if I have, like, I see somebody that almost got into an accident or somebody that came to see me and said that, you know, they almost got clipped by a truck, then I'll just, and I just go, you know, they're friends with the doctor, and they say, look, you know, we can't be doing this here, cause it's a liability.
But obviously, we're dealing with people pushing snow in the public right of way.
Yes.
So, they're not gonna complain about that?
No.
But you know how many problems we have like that right now in town? Is it ten, twenty, thirty?
It depends on the amount of snowfall we have. When we don't have much snow, it's not a big problem. But when you get a big storm, everybody, every year, it's getting worse.
Is it commercial enterprises, or is it residential, or?
You know, that's, that's where I would start thinking about drawing a line somewhere. When somebody's being paid to take care of somebody's snow, and they turn around and they dump it on us, on the town, I have a problem with that. You know, and that, that to me is an issue. When it comes to individuals, then I guess there's a timeframe there that I would consider it, and that's before municipality starts, starts cleaning the streets. And once the streets are clean, or even pushed to the middle, I'm not sure. Some people think that just because you have snow in the middle of the street, that they can just keep plowing up against that. I don't know how to question that, but I would say that once the streets are clean, then anybody that starts pushing snow on the sidewalks or the streets are, are, are concerned.
But a lot of the times, the problem is before we pass. That's where it becomes, because-
So, so then it's just a, a cost issue then? It's not a safety issue?
Well, there's both, you know what I mean? After we clean, they will put some in places where it causes blind spots.
Ah, I see, I see what you're saying.
Also, before we go out to pick up.
Yeah.
If the snow falls and the storm ends at noon, from noon till eight o'clock at night, they're dumping that all over the place just before the blower passes.
Well, you know, this might be a case-by-case basis here. We might have to discuss a few of these, because-
But before we can do all of that, let me summarize in my mind, I think what I'm gonna say is correct, please correct me if I'm wrong. We had an ordinance that spoke to that. That ordinance was put aside by Board of Selectment vote in two thousand and eight. And it was stated that we were going to follow state law, Department of Main Transportation, how they look, and, and, and they have a specific law that states that no snow can be pushed into any road. Is that my understanding as of right now? So, for us to be able to change that, we're going to either have to bring back what we had prior as a community, if we wanna do the case-by-case, or however we wanna do that. Does that mean that we now have to go back to a public hearing?
No.
We don't, we, we have the authority to do that here?
We do, and I think-
Okay.
I think that the Board has the authority to adopt an ordinance, and I think it needs to be clearer than the last one, cause the last one had some contradictory language in it. It was sort of hard to understand. It could be read either way. I think Kevin, you know, in my position is that, if, if, if we're, if it is the will of the Board to pick up snow and to accommodate, that's fine, but we have to budget for that, and there's an expense, and we need to know that. If it's the will of the Board to say no, we're not gonna allow it, then that's, that's the policy that we're going to implement.
And enfor-
And enforce.
So, obviously, the, the ones that's enforced right now is the state regulation, which says no private snow should be put on public land.
Right.
Basically.
Right.
And that's what we should be enforcing right now.
But we're not.
Well, it can stop.
We're trying.
I just wanna say that I'm not trying to be public enemy number one, but the thing is, is that by us picking up other people's snow, we're putting cost burdens on all the taxpayers. Everybody's paying for that.
Yeah.
And my job is to make sure that I try to run this as efficiently for everybody here. I don't think that certain people should pay for other people's snow in the road, because they, you know, they think that they're entitled for that. That's, you know, my thing, that it's very expensive. So, by us putting that in the road, you, you know what I mean? Everybody in here in, in this town is paying for that, one way or another.
Exactly.
I will add to, and you'll see that in some of the conversations of the, when the, when the ordinance is struck, okay, from the books, there's a contractor side of this too, where, you know, if you're a contractor, you see that as the town taking business opportunities away as well.
Competing with private enterprise.
You know, and so, there's many different facets to this that, you know, trying to thread a needle and satisfy everybody, and, and, but, right now, you know, what we want is some discourse, some guidance.
Uh, Laurie wants to-
Well, I'm, I'm not familiar with every street, but I guess, you know, I, I'm all about the budget, and I'm the one that's been pushing the hardest to cut and cut and, and save taxpayer money, but there are some streets where there are homes that there is just no place to put the snow. And the older people have been in their home for, you know, thirty years and, and a fixed income, and now they can't, you know, how are they gonna afford to pay someone who comes? So, how much responsibility do we have to them as well? I guess I don't want that to be forgotten. I'm not saying that, you know.
What you do for one, you're gonna do for all?
Yeah, no, it's, it's a, it's a-
On the older side of town, where the houses are closer together, it, it, it is an issue, but with a snow blower, usually you can find place on your property to clean up your small driveway. On the newer side of town, the roads are all fifty feet wide. And I got, I gotta give credit to Kevin. Last year, I believe it happened for the first time last year, that instead of picking up the snow, he pushed it back one time. Instead of cleaning the snow, picking up the snow, or let's say, once or twice in the year, he picked it up once, right? Last year?
We blew it on the lawns.
Okay, you did, yeah.
On the right of way, and to do the whole town.
You, you didn't pick up at all last year from?
Only our snow routes, and then where there was certain areas, where there was intersections, where there was trees.
I live on Nineteenth, so you never picked up the snow at all on Nineteenth, you just pushed it to the side?
Yes.
I knew you had done it once. I thought maybe you would've picked it up one time. So, you did it twice, which is good, and you know what?
We saved.
We saved a lot of money. I think it's half the price?
It cost me eleven hundred dollars to clean the whole town with the fuel and-
What, what, what's the difference between picking it up and just blowing it to the side? I think you-
Probably twenty-five thousand dollars.
You, you came up to a number, it was like one-third the cost, or something along those lines. So, yeah, I mean, that was great, and it was tried. It's not as nice as having it picked up. We have more gravel on the, on the lawns, but hey, we gotta put up with a few things if we're not gonna pay three more mils next year, right? We gotta do with what we have to do.
Do we have streets that were required to pick up snow, like the Main Street, do we have to do anything there?
Well, with Main Street, obviously, you got, you got your sidewalks and you got your parking, so you're all the way to-
Those, you gotta be picked up.
Certain streets in town that have already, Main Avenue is, there's a few things like that. Eleventh Avenue, the bottom of Eleventh Avenue is very narrow, and that's a main artery. It has to be picked up.
And, and Kevin mentioned it too, he had talked to me about it, was that-
With the law?
Excuse me, Kevin had mentioned in, in our preparation for this meeting tonight, is that one of the bigger, one of the other concerns is that when you have snow coming off private property, that very often, you can pick up a retainer wall block or cinder block.
It's a wood.
The blower.
Anything.
And, and damage to the blower costs tens of thousands of dollars.
Yeah.
That's happened before.
And it's happened before.
From, from private property, yeah.
Yeah. So.
Wow. Normally, we don't open enough, but Eve, go ahead, you've got some experience in that.
I've been with the Public Works for forty-three years, snow removal. It's all in the same way, so it doesn't take a rocket scientist to figure who's pushing the snow. Just takes five minutes, takes five on Main Street, you'll see who's pushing the snow. I think the town manager should get in with Kevin and check out what's going on.
Yes, yes.
And running with you.
And- And report it to Ross. Something that needs to be done, cause I see it myself. I've, I've seen it for forty-three years. And it's still the same guy.
It's gonna have to be addressed case by case.
Case by case, you'll see.
So, is that, is that how it works?
Just stick her right in Main Street, that's all.
I think so. I think we need, we need to, to address those issues that are causing those problems for now. However, keep in mind that we don't have that ordinance.
Well, we're following the state ordinance.
Following the state ordinance.
I'll simplify things.
The state law.
Follow the state law, simplify things, save money to the taxpayer.
Yeah.
And it, and I, I wanna, I wanna ask the Board if they've corrected this issue, because some people have been noticing in the past, maybe not as much now, but we're not in business to open private driveways, are we?
We should not be.
Okay, just wanna make sure. I think you know what I'm talking about. Absolutely. I'll, I'll talk to you.
Okay. Alright, so we'll follow and address those issues that need to be addressed with the local police department.
So, so, in, in issues that, that we do face, you're gonna give them a warning?
First time should be a warning, and then the second time should be a group slide.
I'm thinking if, if we're gonna go with state law, then the Police Department is the ones that handle it, make the decisions on how,
Right.
whether it's gonna be a warning,
Right.
summons.
Yeah.
And we take, officers use discretion. We have common sense, most of the officers. Kevin will give us the complaints of the, the bad issues, but that's something I don't think the Board would have to handle case by case, the Police Department and Public Works can do.
Okay, Kevin, go on.
Last year, what we did is Jamie and I went around to the people that, we, we stopped to talk to them, just to make them aware. Sometimes, they're not aware that they were doing that or causing a hazard. And we talked to them and said, look, you can't put that there, but this is what we think you should do. We gave them our opinion on how to dispose of the snow or put it. Some people took it as, hey, thank you, I didn't notice that. And there's other people that the next time it snowed, we got it twice as bad. And it's an on, and it's an ongoing part of problem in every town, because I've contacted all the public boards.
That's why you need to have the police on speed dial, and call them in. Guys are gonna be busy.
Alright, we've, you know, go ahead, Gary.
You know, I'd like to address that, because, you know, I live on Main Street. My business is on Main Street. I have two businesses on Main Street. I have a residence on Main Street. I take, on one business, I, it's well taken care of. On the other business, there's literally, you know, other than leaving in my driveway, I literally have nowhere to put the snow. So, for forty-some odd years, and I don't know how long, since nineteen sixty-one, my home and where my business is now, it's always been basically pushed across the street into the water street property. And I've gone every year and asked permission, and it's always been allowed. And the times that I do push snow to the middle of the road is when these nice gentlemen here come around and put the snowbank there at three o'clock in the morning, and I take off after them. And I put some snow there, but if there's no snow in the night, if we had the, the storm the night before, I push everything across the street. I, I keep it off the properties. I clean the road. A lot of times, the road is cleaner in front of my shop, in front of my wife's shop and my residence than the street is, a lot of times. And at night, when I have a chance to do it, and the cost probably will vouch for that also. I never leave enough snow there to bother anybody, usually. Other than keeping it in the middle of the road when they come in and push the snow in the middle of the road. Now, they've given me permission to do that.
Get it in writing and show it to the police if he shows up.
No, I don't cause a problem.
No, I'm just saying, because you're going across the road, or you're pushing across the road, not, not, not very good, but you know, it could be a workable solution.
Well, we, we worked that out, so that, that, I'm just trying to say there, that it's a workable situation, and we don't need to criminalize everybody for the fault of a few.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah. But I don't think that the taxpayers should have the burden of paying for certain individual's snow removal. That's where-
That's absolutely true.
I agree with you, yeah.
You're right. And I understand that. And, and I do my darndest to push all my snow across the street, and in springtime, I go and I clean their lawn, I take care of everything. We don't have any issues with anybody at that point.
Have we given any guidance?
On Twentieth Avenue, on Twi- yeah, Twentieth Avenue, we have a problem there, because I have no driveway, I have no lawn, I have no property, it's all driveway.
You can borrow a roof.
I don't think anyone's speaking on you anyway, Gary.
No, no, I understand, but I, but I just don't wanna be a burden, and I just don't want this to be a, a problem to me next year or the year after, when you saw you guys decide, say, oh, the, the view.
It's something, it's something that you and Kevin and the police have to come to an agreement together.
I just, I, I'm, I'm just protecting myself here today.
Alright, looks like, looks like Kevin and Gary, Kevin and Gary and Ross, I think by consensus, or do you wanna take it as a vote, we follow state law? Is that what we're saying?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's what's been on the books anyway.
It's on the books, so we really don't need to take a vote.
We just need to enforce it.
We just, we just, we just kinda clarified the procedure and how to tackle it, and I think that's all.
We all set down the background.
People are reasonable, that's what we reason.
There we go. Okay.
You're gonna have a lot of them.
Okay, uh, we're all set on that Article, Article Eight. Thank you. Article Nine. UDAG Business Account Five Three Two Seven. Consider placing insurance coverages on collateralized business equipment. This is a, I think we have in our, we have in our package, I believe, two pages. Uh, we do have a business that we lent money to, and the business is, so the, the business is closed right now, and the people have moved on, but there's still equipment in there that the town has, uh, it's our assets. And there's a way of protecting that through the process of buying insurance, protect that back. So, we have a statement or a, a proposal for you to look at. Northern Main Development Commission put this together, I believe. And we're looking at a base premium to cover ourselves, cover the building, and-
The building's covered by, by the-
The bank?
Okay.
Okay, so the, just the-
It's the contents.
Okay, so, we're looking at a total of how much? Is that twelve twenty?
Twelve hundred twenty dollars.
To cover our assets.
Yeah, and that'll be tapped on to the principal of, of, of the loan. And, and through UDAG program, so it's not a, it's not a taxpayer cost.
Is that a normal thing that's been done elsewhere, or is this something that?
Yes.
And we know that equipment's all still there? I mean, I don't wanna-
Yes, and when it closed, I went, I couldn't go inside, but I was able to, to visual, you know, visually see. And working with the, the bank who has the mortgage on the property, they let me know that the equip, it's still, it's still in there. And the, you know, the keys, the entry, the keys have been, the locks have been changed. And, and everything is secure and safe, the building's being heated by the bank. And we have our contents, and whether or not we wanna insure, ensure those contents for theft or for damages, it's something else.
So, 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 so this was a UDAG loan that was
Yes.
given to them, and now we have a lien on some of the property?
And the equipment.
The equipment?
Yep.
To the two hundred forty thousand dollars.
Roughly.
Roughly forty thousand.
Roughly. And is that still roughly the amount of the loan?
Yeah, I don't have the balance in there. I don't have the balance. It's, it's in that vicinity, yes. The, the amount of the loan was more than that, but that's what the balance is, I think.
So, this insurance premium will guarantee that the equipment remains under the town's property?
Somebody bought it out.
It is our property, but if something should happen, it would be, you know, damage to, to the land or whatever.
Cause there's value with that equipment. We're just trying to protect that value.
Yeah, I think it makes good sense to insure, insure it, I mean-
So, what does the insurance do now?
There's a deductible on the insurance.
But I mean, what, what does it protect this thing? I don't understand what the insurance does.
Fire, theft.
So, what, what happens is, is, you know, the business is bankrupt, and it went through the bankruptcy process, and that's going to take some time to get resolved. In that, in the meantime, we're, we're waiting for-
A buyer.
A buyer, okay, and, and whether-
Are we waiting, or are we at the time?
No, I think right now, we have to wait for the bankruptcy court to
Okay, to go through the procedure.
The trustee to take care of that, and, and we're gonna figure out, you know, what, how, how we're gonna be made whole through that process. And so, until then, you know, that can take, what, several months or a year?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Who knows how long, I think, with the decision to protect what's in there from damages, uh, would be one that, I think we might wanna consider.
And this would be a yearly thing until everything gets resolved?
Yeah, and there's no proration to this, if you, if you, this is for one year. So, you can't, you can't buy this insurance in, in, in six months, say.
And then say we're all set, give us back our-
Can you elaborate a little bit about what we have available? What kind of equipment we're talking about?
Restaurant, restaurant equipment.
Equipment, stole, stolen, stolen, yeah. Anything moves.
So, Northern Main-
I just have a hard time with insurance on, 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 on an issue like this.
And so, Northern Main Development Commission administers our UDAG program, and they also do their own lending programs. So, this is a typical thing for them, and they requested whether or not we would wanna do this or not. You know, I'm not saying that we need to, I'm not saying that we don't need to. It's, it's your choice whether or not we should.
It's a decision for us to make.
It was not, it's not for, it's not for me to decide.
Yeah, go ahead.
It's for you to decide.
Absolutely.
This would insure us against-
Vandalism, that, that building burns down.
Fire.
Whatever.
I can't even imagine that there's gonna be a thousand dollars of equipment there.
What do you wanna do?
I, I'm not in favor.
Okay.
I'm kinda leaning towards in favor. I think if I had forty thousand dollars or something out there, and it was in- I think if I had forty thousand dollars or something out there and it was in
Where's the value?
in a questionable place where you oversee it daily, you're not there all the time. It could, uh, easily be vandalized, it could easily be gone. Uh, you're gonna spend twelve hundred dollars to protect, uh, your, uh, investment of forty thousand dollars, I think it's worth it.
Where, where does the value come from?
It's just various pieces of restaurant equipment.
So there's no, like, list of what's supposed to be there?
There's, there's a list, I don't have it.
No, but there is one.
But that's, that's what I mean.
Yeah, we have a list.
Yeah, I have my list, yeah.
I'm gonna ask for a motion, one way or the other. Is there a motion? To approve, uh, buying this insurance? Start that way. A positive motion. I make a motion that we, uh, insure it. Moved by Dave. Is there a second to Dave's, Dave's motion? I guess not. For that motion, Dave dies. Is there another motion to not buy the insurance? So we have it on record. So moved by Doug. Is there a second to that?
Second.
Second by Lori. All in favor of not purchasing the insurance? Raise your hands. Any opposed? For the record, Mr. Moore and.
Um, is it possible that we can revisit this and, and like see the list of what we are paying to insure? And the age of it and the, like, where did this value come from?
Yeah, so.
It could very well be that this equipment's only worth ten thousand bucks.
Well, and that's what I'm thinking. It's hard, it's hard to imagine in a place like that, the age of, of the business and what was there before, that it's actually worth this and why would we want to pay money for it to end?
Okay, before we get too far into it, uh, we did not change our policy, uh, in our time. Uh, I know we're gonna run over, but I have a motion with a second that allows us to go over the two hour limit.
I make a motion to go over the two hour limit.
Lori, is there a second? Doug, all in favor?
Discussion?
Well, discussion, go ahead, Dave.
Wait, wait, we told you to bring your issues.
Discussion, uh, we're gonna discuss Article ten to fourteen.
That's correct.
Not to exceed half an hour.
We're gonna have to, we're gonna have to get going.
Okay.
We'll see. Well, the motion is to go extend the two hours. You just added, is an acceptable part of the motion, not to exceed half an hour.
I, I would agree with that for sure.
Okay, alright, all in favor? Okay, thank you. Let's go. Article ten, updated by the Economic and Community Development Director, Mr. Seer.
And on that note, I will be super quick in my, yeah, I got you, Dave. Um, alright, so, uh, December fourth, uh, NMDC Representative Dana Delano, uh, had a, Delano, yeah, Delano, had a, uh, we had a meeting at the safety complex in Madawaska. He works through NMDC, he works for PTAC, which is, uh, Procurement Technical Assistance Center. Um, his job basically, he's, I've been in conversation with him the past few months. He's spoken to the chamber director as well and tried to reach out to various contractors and businesses. Um, with the bridge and land port of entry project coming up, um, his job, uh, he works, he helps the town out in letting people know, he wants to try to keep as many, uh, as much money as possible from this project in town. Um, so I mean, at first, obviously, you think of contracting firms like Ed Pilleter and, and people that do landscaping and earthwork and whatnot. But quite frankly, with the influx of, um, people that are gonna be coming from a way to work on this project, uh, all these people have to eat, they have to sleep, um, they're gonna need to cut their hair, and they're gonna need groceries and all these things. So, uh, I'm working with Dana and the, and Sharon, the chamber director, to try to put together, um, a directory that we can send because Dana has, uh, Dana Delano has the list of general contracting firms and architectural engineering firms and their contact info. So basically, if you're a small business that thinks that you could have a part in this project, um, you can reach out and let them know you're there. Um, so some of the larger firms have, he's already touched base with. Um, we actually had a good showing. We had nine, we had nine or ten local businesses, uh, representatives show up to that meeting, so they were able to get a PowerPoint, which I have, uh, and I'll make available on our website, and I'll post it on Facebook as well. Um, so in the next few months, I'll be working and try to just go door to door and talk to people, let them know, uh, how they can get involved. And, and if I can't answer any questions, um, Dana at NMDC will be willing to help out with that. So just wanted to touch on that. Um, I wanted to get an update, I wanted to give you an update on the CDBG, um, facade program. Uh, earlier this year, we were awarded a hundred thousand dollars through the state, um, for downtown revitalization. We're gonna be using that hundred thousand dollars for, uh, facade program for local business and building owners. Um, we just, I just finished a bunch of the, like, environmental review paperwork that had to, to go. So right now, in the next month or so, I'm gonna be, uh, finalizing the guidelines and the application. And hopefully by February, early March at the latest, I'll be able to distribute those, um, to all the business and building owners within our downtown scope, which was designated as, uh, Mill Street to the Midtown Shopping Plaza. Is, is the scope of work that we had applied for in this one. Um, so that'll be available. Yes?
Is that a hundred thousand dollars, something a grant the town has to match, or are the, do the businesses have to match?
Yeah, there's gonna be a business match. Yeah.
So it's not costing the taxpayer?
It, no, it will, well, it's not gonna cost the taxpayer, no, but it's gonna cost the.
So the business gets part of this hundred thousand, they have to.
Right, and what I'm working on right now. Right, and what I'm working on right now is to try to figure out what that match number would be, cause I'm trying to balance a couple things. I wanna be able to help as many separate buildings as possible, so you don't wanna make it where it's, where you're giving away too much and then you have bigger projects and not as many people get. So I, I'm trying to find that balance, uh, but there will be a match from the business or building owner, and then they will get a certain amount of grant money. Uh, so the facade work has to be visible from the street, and it has to be on the exterior of the building, so you can't remodel the bathroom inside. But we're talking, um, you know, whether it's paint on the outside or a finish, uh, awnings, windows, doors, um, anything along those lines. Uh, so we're, we're hoping that should hopefully help out. Um, and then lastly, November twenty-first, I had a public hearing, um, with all the abutting landowners in regards to the, um, Route One sidewalk project that we got grant funding for with Main DOT. Um, it was basically, we heard some comments and some concerns and questions, um, from the abutting landowners. Um, the preliminary engineering report was completed, and now Main DOT has entered the right-of-way process, which is about a year-long process. Um, so this project is currently on track, uh, for twenty twenty-one construction.
Money's from this, uh, sidewalk project is coming from?
Main DOT.
Main DOT.
Yeah.
With no match on us?
Yeah, it's, uh, eighty, eighty-twenty, right? Yeah, eighty-twenty. Main DOT's got eighty, we got twenty.
We've been, we've been appropriating money. The, the project has been hit in the works for quite some time, for a few years now. And so we've been putting money into a capital reserve account specifically for that match. And, uh, and we can also use our, um, downtown revitalization bond monies, um, to, you know, to help with our match.
With that twenty percent.
With that, to get to that twenty percent.
So we're not talking about an unfunded project that's coming ahead that's already funded?
Oh, yeah, 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 this has been in the works for a while, before I even.
Okay, uh, Lori wants to.
Dave, I'll make it quick in the interest of your PGA user. Um, I just wanted to let you guys know, I, I know I did tell Dawn and I talked to Keith myself. I've, like I said, I hit the streets, I've been talking to a lot of the business owners, and I came upon one who, um, is struggling a little bit and was extremely, uh, nervous about a situation that they're in. And she had spoken to Keith, and she had nothing but good things to say about how he made her feel and, and she was confident he was gonna step up, and I won't say who, just because it's not, you know, everyone's business to know what she had to say. But, um, I, I guess, thank you. Like, you, you really made this business owner feel like you were there and you were gonna help, and, and she felt good about that, so.
Thank you.
I wanted to make that.
Appreciate it, so.
Thank you.
Could you just clarify that it wasn't my wife that told you that?
No, it wasn't, it was not your wife.
Thank you.
And it wasn't my business either.
Okay, Article eleven. Thank you, Keith, on those.
Yeah.
Article eleven, to consider approval of property tax account amendments. Who's gonna lead us through this discussion?
I can do that.
Go ahead.
So, as your agenda, it says, uh, there is a, a list.
Gary, sorry, could you speak up louder?
Sorry, um, there is a list of, because there was a, a booking of accounts. Uh, it was an oversight on the Assessor's two thousand and eighteen changes, uh, they weren't updated into the billing system. So we, we have a grouping of accounts here, uh, that we would need board to approve for supplemental billing, and also, uh, some reductions in billing as well.
So thi- this, this situation is, is in front of us because? What?
Because it was a group of, of changes to tax cars due to movements to properties or removal of properties or whatever. They didn't make it into the tax bracket. They weren't plugged in, it was because, because, because we didn't get the information in time.
And, and so this is going to address everybody that's listed here?
Yep.
And that will require a, a vote and a second, and a, a, a motion and a second and a vote to abate, uh, at the end of this whole thing fifty-four hundred dollars?
Yeah. And the supplemental billing would be twenty-one.
Yeah.
Twenty-one thousand dollars, rounding.
Additional. Additional funds to collect.
Well, everyone said it off and everyone wants, needs to pay their fair share, right?
Yeah, you know, but it's just hitting him after the fact is what this is. I mean, I, I don't like this at all. I, I don't know what to do with that because I know very well that you're gonna get some slack with this, or some flack, not sly. You know, this is a list of how many, I mean, it looks like we have, uh, a few, oh, please.
Does it get into the system because the assessor didn't put it in, or?
No, our office.
I don't understand.
No, our office.
Okay.
Our office didn't put it in.
These are all properties that are no longer existed?
No, no, no.
These are properties that may have gotten some building permanent activity, and there were some changes to the property that added value, or.
The assessor comes in and makes changes, okay, puts it on a sheet of paper, multiple times throughout the year, after April first, okay? He comes throughout the entire year. That's the last packet during all this public scrutiny and everything else that we've had to deal with in the back office here. That package of six pages was missed. So the net effect of that is a fifteen dollar, uh, fifteen thousand dollar supplemental billing that we need to hit other taxpayers. They have come in, they already know about it. Uh, right now, I can't do anything about it until you folks look at it and sign. But they are aware because they've come in and they said, "Hmm, my bill's a little bit lower."
Okay.
What happened?
Okay.
Either your new building wasn't on it, or it's those changes that were not in, the values were not entered.
This is not a, uh, this is not a practice that we see on, on a regular basis?
No.
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 I just knew enough that I wouldn't know what last year looked like, but.
No, no, this is not normal.
Are taxpayers that are aware of this scenario?
Yes. Most of them will be getting, um, like, some of them haven't paid yet, obviously, but there'll be like a twenty dollar reduction. That's why all those, there's like, what, sixty accounts in there? So you've got a twenty dollar reduction, a ten dollar reduction in their tax bill or what have you. And it's because the chance starts the land value that changed due to tree growth, cause if they're in tree growth, those values change every year. So that's what it is. It was a packet of changes, I think it was like six pages, that the values needed to be updated, and the billing was sent out before those values were updated.
Got it.
Okay?
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
Yep.
There a motion?
Oh, you guys are killing me.
Go ahead.
No, I mean, if, if they're aware and it's, you know, if I built an addition on my house and I know that I have to pay the extra tax on that and I'm aware of it, then, then I don't have an issue, I mean, but people have to pay their taxes just like all of the rest of us. So I'll make a motion to, um, accept the list of supplemental billing as presented.
Okay, by Lori. There a second?
No second.
Dave, any more discussion? All in favor? Period. Article twelve, consider the VRF and the, uh, NARA Committee Report, NARA VRF report.
Okay.
I don't have those.
No, there were, there were none.
There were none?
Oh, okay, good.
We keep, we keep those on there as place marks?
So we don't forget them. Yeah, and, and, and I, we don't have a, a airport report.
Remind us, the, uh, VRF meeting is next Monday.
And the airport meeting is, is coming Wednesday of next week.
Oh, Dave, you're gonna get, put your P-shoes on pretty soon.
Alright, so we're all set on those. Uh, Article thirteen, do you have a town manager's report?
I do not have a town manager's report.
Can we just leave that there so that we can not forget?
Yep.
Okay. The last article is Article fourteen, uh, to consider an executive session for economic development purposes, uh, purposes for one MRS A subsection four, five, six E. We need a motion to go to the executive session, uh, on the economic development purposes.
A little.
Moved by Doug. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Dave. All in favor? Period. There is no more articles, uh, left on our agenda. Um, I don't know if we're gonna have any post-executive, uh, action to take. Uh, you, you pray we may have some.
We may have some.
To those who wanna stay, welcome to stay. I guess we'll go into your office again.
Can I ask a question?
Go ahead, Bert.
What are we gonna do about the pigeons on Main Street, the dirty, the sidewalks, it's disgusting?
Oh, my God.
What are we gonna do with that?
Well.
It's a disgrace to the town. And someone's gotta do something.
Can we appoint you, Albert, to take care of that?
No, but it looks bad. You walk on the sidewalk that's there.
We'll, we'll open a Kentucky Fried Chicken.
Yeah, so they had a dog. What are you gonna do?
Placy glass or something.
Just put some wire, chicken wire, chicken wire and block it off.
Yeah, just block it off with a placy glass or something, just block it off.
Do something.
As you have a dinghy going, you're gonna watch.
It's ridiculous. If the bricks don't fall on your head.
Go ahead.
I, I just wanted to know, who's, who's the town attorney? I didn't get a chance to ask. Yeah, I didn't wanna cut anybody off.
Rudman Wincell.
Rudman Wincell, R-U-D-M-A-N-C-E-L-L.
The one, the one that gave you guys the, that you guys contacted earlier?
It's a disgrace.
Yes.
I, I can give you my.
For the petition?
Yeah, I, I can, you can have this.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Don, I'd just like to suggest, is that the, uh, the police force, how many police officers do we have?
Six, I think.
How many?
Six.
Six? I think those six especially should be given a free pass to go work out at the high school. Alright? And I'm serious.
Yeah, whatever.
You know, I bought some real good equipment thirty years ago, well, back in nineteen ninety-two, and it's still in good shape. And I think, uh, the police, uh, department could, uh, make good use of that.
So if we run out of money for that, you power.
Don, don't worry about that.
Are you gonna make up the difference?
We're gonna go in the other room right now. Are we going back? Do we need any?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, it's probably gonna come back and clean down by association. Okay, yeah. Yeah, no, no, no.
We said we were gonna go, just in case someone wants to.
Don, we'll see January sixth.
Yes.
That's what I saw on the calendar.
We can write it down. I don't think it said make that up.
Yeah.
It would be good if you were, so you can write whatever, whatever.
Thank you.